Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Pacifica Planning Commission Meeting of August 21st, 2017. Before the roll call, I'd like to welcome the newest member of the Planning Commission, Dan Stegnek, who will soon be appearing in the roll call. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Behringer.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Present.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Stedgen.
Present.
Commissioners Niblin and Cooper are absent.
Thank you. And in the salute to the flag, could Commissioners Stegnek lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. On to administrative business, we have an agenda. Do I see a motion to approve Commissioner Campbell?
No, but I'll make that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I see a second? Commissioner Behringer.
I'll second the motion.
Please vote. And that's passing. That's still passing unanimously. Okay, moving on to, we have a couple of minutes. Let's go to the July 17th, 2017 minutes. Do I see a motion to approve Commissioner Clifford?
I move to approve the minutes of July 17th, 2017.
Great. Do I see a second? Commissioner Behringer.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, please vote. And that is passing unanimously. Moving on to the minutes of August 7th, 2017. Commissioner Clifford.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of August 7th, 2017, but I have a couple of changes I'd like to make. One down, under approval of minutes for June 19th, 2017. I believe it was me who pointed out that the, there was a typo in the number of units and not Commissioner Gordon.
Are you able to specify which packet page, please? Which packet page?
Packet page 39. Okay, and then on package page 42, this is not a mistake that the transcriber made, it's a mistake that I made. And it's, the name of the person I wanted to close the meeting on was Thomas Ball. And he spelled his first name T-H-O-M, he left the A-S off. I was so upset to know that he had passed that I simply couldn't get his name out correctly. So if you could make that correction for me, even though I said what I said, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion as amended, and do I see a second? For approval of the August 7th, 2017 meeting. Commissioner Behringer.
I'll second the motion.
Great, please vote. And that is passing unanimously as well. Okay, on to the next agenda item is oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Time allowed for any speaker is three minutes. We do not have any cards, and I don't see anybody who is seeking to speak, so I will move on to the public hearing. The first item is, for the public hearing, is TA 105-17. It's a text amendment initiated by the City of Pacifica to amend various Pacifica municipal code provisions to conform with amendments enacted by the California Legislature to Government Code Section 65852.2 concerning accessory dwelling units, in other words, second residential units permitting by local agencies. The amendment to be considered would affect residential property citywide. Recommended sequel action is exempt, and the recommended action from the Planning Department is to adopt the attached resolution initiating the text amendment and recommending approval to City Council. Could we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. I'm Associate Planner Christian Murdock. This evening, we are holding a continued public hearing to initiate a text amendment to the Pacifica Municipal Code related to zoning provisions for accessory dwelling unit or ADU construction. ADU, as you explained, is the term used in state law and in the proposed ordinance to refer to what are more commonly known as second units, in-law units, or granny flats. The proposed ordinance would affect residentially zoned properties throughout the city by regulating construction of ADUs on any residentially zoned property containing an existing single-family residence. Staff has prepared the proposed ordinance in response to changes in state law which took effect January 1st of this year. The California Legislature enacted Assembly Bill 2299 and Senate Bill 1069 amending the Government Code section pertaining to local government regulation of ADUs. The bills established more permissive standards for ADU construction that serve as the maximum standards local governments may apply. They contain many specific provisions limiting local control which have the effect of making ADU construction easier for property owners. The most significant provision of the bills is that any local ordinance regulating ADUs which is inconsistent with state law shall be considered null and void. When a local ordinance has been deemed null and void, the basic state standards shall apply within that jurisdiction until a compliant ordinance is adopted. Other significant provisions of the bills include prohibiting a discretionary process for approval of ADU applications, except within the coastal zone where the city may continue to require a coastal development permit, and eliminating off-street parking requirements for ADUs meeting certain criteria, including location within one-half mile of transit, and ADUs created within an existing primary dwelling unit or accessory structure. There are numerous provisions in the city's existing ordinance in Article 4.5 of the zoning regulations that are now inconsistent with state law, which means the city has been operating under the minimal state standards since January 1st. Therefore, in staff's opinion, it is important for the city to enact an updated ordinance as soon as possible. The commission has considered the proposed ADU ordinance at two prior public hearings, with this being the third public hearing. In its deliberations at the previous hearings, the commission discussed a variety of topics and requested certain changes to the proposed ordinance. Staff has incorporated those changes directed by the commission in the version of the ordinance currently being considered. At the July 17th hearing, the commission asked staff to evaluate a new aspect of ADU construction related to street width. Staff has highlighted, or, excuse me, staff had highlighted that state law allows local agencies to determine where attached and detached ADUs may be constructed based on factors that include, but are not limited to, the impact of ADUs on traffic flow and public safety. The commission pointed to the narrow streets that exist in many parts of Pacifica and cited their own experiences with double-parked cars and other factors that have impacted the response times of fire trucks and other emergency vehicles. Staff's resulting evaluation, described more fully in the staff report, relied on the street width standards contained in Appendix D of the 2016 California Fire Code. Appendix D prohibits on-street parking on streets 26 feet or less in width. Based on this standard, staff identified the proportion of the city's streets which would be affected by a prohibition on attached or detached ADU construction on narrow streets for the purpose of protecting public health and safety. Staff's recommendation, if supported by the commission, would be to prohibit attached and detached ADU construction on a site when the street fronting the site does not meet Appendix D standards for on-street parking at any point along the street, along the site's frontage. It is important to note, however, that under state law, the city must continue to permit ADUs constructed within the existing area of a single-family residence or accessory structure along these streets. As I conclude my report, I want to mention that staff understands some commissioners may have reservations about the proposed ordinance or ADUs in general, and still other commissioners may be uncomfortable with the limitations on local control of ADUs imposed by the legislature, which has taken away the city's ability to determine outright what is best for Pacifica. However, as noted earlier in the report, the legislature has enacted a law which invalidates any local ADU ordinance inconsistent with its provisions. As a result, if the commission wishes to maximize local control over ADUs to the maximum extent permissible under state law, it should recommend approval of the ADU ordinance to City Council without delay. Examples of those areas where the commission would be able to assert some amount of remaining local discretion over ADU regulations by advancing the proposed ordinance include requiring owner occupancy of sites with ADUs, prohibiting use of ADUs for short-term rentals less than 30 days, clarifying the definition of public transit in relation to off-street parking exemptions, requiring replacement of certain garage parking spaces when a garage is converted into an ADU, increasing separation between ADUs and other structures, prohibiting windows and doors in ADUs created within minimum setback areas, establishing appropriate height limits so an ADU is not taller than the primary dwelling unit on a site, and prohibiting attached and detached ADUs on narrow streets. Without a valid local ordinance, none of these restrictions are currently in effect in Pacifica. Enacting a local ordinance is necessary to bring them to bear in the review of ADU applications. The Planning Department has already issued building permits for two ADUs under the minimal state standards, and has three other building permit applications pending for ADUs, two of which it must issue before the proposed ordinance could take effect. Thus, time is of the essence to restore maximum local control by adopting the proposed ordinance. In closing, staff requests that after receiving public comment and deliberating, the Planning Commission adopt the resolution included as Attachment A, which initiates the text amendment and recommends approval to the City Council. Because the item before you is related to a legislative action, in this case, an ordinance to amend the text of the city's zoning regulations, an affirmative vote of at least four commissioners is required to recommend approval or disapproval to City Council. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that excellent report, Christian. At this point, since the City of Pacifica is the applicant, it doesn't make sense to give the city a chance to speak, so should we just go ahead to open the public hearing? Yeah? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Are there questions for staff? Commissioner Campbell.
Just wanted to get clarity on the tandem parking issue. I think I saw in the packet that we're not going to have, we're not going to allow tandem parking, is that correct?
That's not quite correct. So the state law does require us to allow tandem parking to meet the parking requirements for ADUs.
Oh, okay. God, I thought I said, I thought I read on page 58. Anyways, I must have misread that. So we are going to allow tandem parking on the, along the set, the side yards or side setbacks?
That's correct. We're required by state law to accept tandem parking to meet the off-street parking requirement. I'll review page 58 in the packet to make sure there's not some exception that haven't, that hasn't come to mind for me. There's a lot of different standards, so.
Sure, sure, sure.
I'll make sure.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Behringer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Christian, excellent job on the prepare, preparation of the report tonight. I've got a question for you on the building permits that are pending. Did I correctly hear you say that two have been issued?
Yes.
Two have been issued. That's interesting, because last time we discussed this, there were none pending, and so now we've already got two that have been issued. Would those two that have been issued, would they have met these requirements or not?
They would not have been required to meet all of the requirements in the proposed ordinance.
No, I'm just saying, would they have met them had we had these requirements in place at the time of the application?
I don't have that information.
We don't? And there's three more that are pending?
Correct.
Do we know if those meet any of the requirements?
I don't know. I haven't evaluated them.
Okay. So we could theoretically have five of these approved before we even have an ordinance that theoretically could have prohibited these five for valid, technically valid reasons?
At least four. One of them was submitted within the last week, if I'm remembering correctly, so two more, the third pending. We could potentially take the full 120 days, and hopefully the ordinance would be in effect by then.
Well, because last time we talked, I asked the question directly, trying not to create a form substance issue, but how long it would take to process these, so that we couldn't have any sneak in until the ordinance, despite my feelings about the ordinance, that we couldn't have anybody that could come in and do that on the interim basis, and now it looks like we've got five of them, two of which have already been issued?
That's correct. And so that statement, in my recollection, was much earlier in the process before we had significant delays. The state law allows us 120 days to act on an application, and so we've exceeded that since the initial public hearing before the commission.
No, no, but I'm talking about, it's 120 days from the building permit application, right?
Correct.
So these have been pending? Some of these have been pending for 120 days?
One that I recall was submitted in December of 2016, one, I think, in March of 2017, and so those that had been pending for an extended period, we've acted on those as required by law.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, respond to Commissioner Campbell's comment. Packet page 58 references the existing Article 4.5, and so where it talks about allowing tandem, or, excuse me, prohibiting tandem parking, that's an inconsistent provision of the existing ordinance.
Of the existing, that's where I saw it. Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, no more questions for staff? I'm not seeing any lights. Let's, at this point, open the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak on this matter has an opportunity to do so right now by filling out a card and stepping up. I don't see anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the Planning Commission for deliberation. Madam Director, did you want to say anything about, did you just want to perhaps reiterate the requirements, the special requirements that are, that we need to meet in order to get this passed?
Sure. I just wanted to point out, and this is expanding on what Mr. Murdock explained in his presentation, is four commissioners constitutes a quorum. And when you're deciding what I'll call regular items, like use permits, you would only need a majority of the quorum present to pass an item. So if there was only four of you to approve a use permit, it would need to at least be three, one. However, with legislative recommendations to City Council, our bylaws require that for a formative vote, so the majority of the entire commission, whether or not they're here or not. So any action you take tonight would need four, four votes to support it.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, Commissioner Clifford, you want to kick us off?
Yes. First, I want to thank Christian for an excellent report, and you've done your usual stellar job, so thank you very much for that. And going to the overall recommendation, I'm now willing to go ahead and vote for that recommendation. I think we have made substantial changes in what was presented to us originally. There's a lot we've managed to squeeze out of this, and the width of the streets was the final piece for me. So I will be voting for this when that time comes.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, generally aligned with the thinking there. I really also want to express my, my thanks for a really well-done report and for the study that was done on road widths. I think that was really incredible that you got that done so fast and so quickly, and certainly gets at my concerns about public health and safety, which was the paramount concern there. So, yeah, I think I'm willing to move this one forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Behringer.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, it shouldn't be any surprise that I continue to be opposed to this for a lot of fundamental reasons, but I do want to compliment staff on a well-done report, and it's a tough issue, and God knows, we've asked a multitude of questions, and you've responded admirably to that, and we do appreciate that. The reason I'm opposed to it is I can't get around the fact that it essentially wipes out single-family residential zoning in our community without any thought to how it is to be developed and reasonable standards. I mean, in some cases, I understand that if the lot sizes were larger, that this might be something that would work, but when you're looking at a community where there are a substantial number of lots that are less, 5,000 feet or less, I'm just not sure how this works. And then there's the issue of there's no fee structure that would support our infrastructure like sewer and water. There are going to be traffic issues, certain parts of our community. I mean, I understand the road width, and that's maybe one way to kind of bootstrap your way into having at least some reasonable control over this, even though in my mind, it's not enough. You know, you need to have the ability to control real estate development in our community like we do on every other type of project. And staff researches it, they present it to us, we have public hearings, and then we make a decision, and there's a lot of discussion on it. This is essentially creating by right development and doubling the density in certain parts of our community that I'm not convinced can support it. And the fact that you've already got five people queuing up to build things leads me to believe that people have figured out that this is going to be a relatively expedited way to build things, doesn't mean they're good projects, it just means they'll get built. And then, three years down the road, when people figure out that this is a really bad idea, they'll already be in existence, and there really will be nothing you can do about it. I continue to advocate for fighting back. I understand, you know, council is here tonight. This is probably a, an issue that would be taken up at the City Council level, not at the Planning Commission level, but I do think that we should push back on this and try to carve out areas where this might make sense in our community and allow it to occur in those areas where it makes sense to happen, and in those areas where it doesn't, I think we should not allow it to happen. I understand what Sacramento is trying to do. There's an extraordinary housing shortage in our state. They're trying to create a method to expedite the development of that, to solve the problem, but this is not the most thoughtful approach to development, and it's going to have unintended consequences that I think the people that live in this community are going to bear the burden for that. The folks in Sacramento are not. So for that reason, I am opposed to this, and I will not vote for it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Behringer. I guess I'll step in here. Let's see, oh, so are you familiar with, oh, there you go. Go for it, Commissioner Stegnek. How do you pronounce your last name?
Stedgenk. Stedge like sledgehammer, ink like incorporated. Stedgenk.
Stegnek.
That's correct.
There you go. Commissioner Stegnek.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon, I'm familiar myself with the entirety of the record, and I'll be participating. I took a look at the other 20 cities in San Mateo County and what they've done on ADUs. Our maximum square footage is actually about the maximum that any cities have looked at. Palo Alto, for instance, 900 square feet. San Bruno, 700 square, 750 square feet max. These are for ADUs. JDUs are 500 square feet. There was one city which I believe was, I believe it was Mendel Park, that had capped 1,200 square feet only for lots, 20,000 square feet and above. I do agree with Commissioner Behringer somewhat that it's going to change the nature of our community, but I also agree with Commissioner Gordon, who said, you know, we've got a preemption or supremacy clause. I'm not sure what she said, but, you know, the state is mandating this, it's ministerial, and we really don't have that much leeway in terms of what the solutions are in cities that have money to burn and money to pay lawyers for years on end are not choosing to fight this. So, in general, I'm supporting this. I am a little bit curious on where we stand. One of the commissioners, I'm not sure who, had mentioned seniors who need a, who may be transitioning on in their lives to care facilities or wherever, that may be using this as like a revenue stream, renting their actual residence and the ADU as a revenue stream. And I'm curious where the final result was, what we had come up with on that in terms of.
So after deliberating extensively on that topic, the direction from the commission at a previous hearing was to require owner occupancy, and so in the scenario where the owner departs for senior care or some other scenario, under the ordinance that's proposed this evening, they would be violating the ordinance by continuing to rent the ADU.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll jump in here. I am, well, first of all, I think, I think whoever, I think it was Commissioner Campbell who offered the idea of putting some kind of restriction on narrow streets, and I think that, I'm not sure, but whoever did, that was a great idea, and it's really great. I think that's just a great add. I definitely get where Commissioner Behringer's coming from, and I agree that this sort of one-size-fits-all from Sacramento is going to have unintended consequences that are not good. Having said that, at this point, we're, I mean, we're kind of just sitting there with our pants down right now without any, without anything in place, because the legislation has sort of rendered all of our own reasonable restrictions on ADUs null and void. So until we get something in place, we need to get something in place, that's my position. And we need to get something in place as soon as possible, since you've got, we've got pending applications, folks are queuing up. So I'm definitely in favor of moving this forward, sending it with a recommendation to City Council. I'm, I just want to put my creative thinking cap on, is there a way, assuming that we had four votes for this, to, in our recommendation to City Council, approve, recommending that they approve this, is there a way for us to somehow put in some kind of, just articulate some of our concerns about, not necessarily this ordinance, but the legislation from Sacramento, and our concerns about unintended consequences, our concerns about how it's going to change the landscape of our, basically, our one zoning, and the fact that we have smaller lots, generally speaking, et cetera, et cetera.
So what I would suggest is we could include those in additional recitals that could be read into the motion, and if that's where the will of the Planning Commission is, we can help out with some language, with additional recitals that will express those sentiments.
Right, and I didn't mean to speak for the Planning Commission, I just, those are my own sentiments. I'd be sort of, it's almost like making a recommendation with a footnote.
Yes.
I mean, you'll notice in the resolution, you know, typically, we just, we have a minimum number of procedural facts that are in the recitals to sort of tell the history of how we got to, you know, conclusion on a particular resolution, but it's really the way for the commission to also express its thinking and how it arrived at its decision. And so as the Director stated, you know, this is an appropriate place to insert that type of commentary as far as qualifying your recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I just wanted to agree with that. I think we should put something like that in, so voice my support.
Commissioner Clifford.
I also would agree with some additional footnotes to the, our recommendation, so that the Council was very clear that although we're recommending it, we still have serious concerns.
Okay, so Commissioner Stegnek, where do you, where are you falling here?
I'm leaning towards approving this ordinance. I'm curious if there's any potential for refining this as we go along. Say, Commissioner Behringer had said, you know, what happens if this gets wound back three years in, and we've changed the nature of the city forever? There's a, you know, there's a technological potential there, too. You know, what happens if Home Depot comes out with a $15,000 roto-molded plastic cube that's 1,200 square foot, and suddenly they're doing no-money-down financing, they'll do all the permits for you, and it just becomes a, an ADU machine? Is that what we want? And is there any potential to mitigate those effects later?
So this is, this is an ordinance that the city adopts. If there's any amendments to state law going forward, or if there's anything that the city feels that we need to do in the future, you know, maybe there's an unintended consequence here that we're just not seeing, we always have the discretion to bring that back to the Planning Commission, to the City Council.
Is there any opportunity to stipulate, you know, no prefab construction or only stick-built on-site, something of that sort?
We cannot prohibit manufactured homes.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you, were you going to say something? No, okay. I do not see any more lights. So just for point of clarification here, I'm just counting votes. We've got four votes in favor, three votes in favor of the, some additional comments, some additional commentary in the recital to express some of our concerns about the legislature. Where do you fall, Commissioner Stegnek, on that?
Can you just elaborate slightly on what those additional comments would be?
I can maybe read some for your consideration. So what I would suggest is adding by motion right before the "now, therefore, be it resolved", so these would be kind of the last three recitals, that whereas the Planning Commission is disappointed and concerned that the state has taken a one-size-fits-all approach to regulating accessory dwelling units. has taken a one-size-fits-all approach to regulating accessory dwelling units without regard to the unique topographical and built environment of Pacifica and other communities throughout the state. And whereas the commission's recommended, recommendation addresses the unique conditions in Pacifica to the extent allowed under state law, including but not limited to impacts to privacy, emergency vehicle access, parking availability, and transit availability. And whereas the planning commission's recommendation that the city council approve this accessory dwelling unit ordinance on balance maintains more local control over certain aspects of the review and approval process for accessory dwelling units than, than allowing the regulations to default to the state law, which does not take Pacifica's unique aspects under consideration.
That's probably longer than I would have needed, but yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'm at peace with that. It's essentially a self-determined, we're complaining that we don't have self-determination, so.
Okay, and other commissioners are okay with that, additional language?
I like it.
Yes, I like it also.
Okay. So, okay, Commissioner Clifford?
So with that taken care of, I will move to adopt the resolution, including Attachment A, initiating text amendments TA-105 through 17, and recommend approval to the city council with the additional comments added to the resolution.
And through the chair, would the motioner like to also add the language, it's on package page 48, regarding the street widths?
Yes.
And through the chair, we do have some supplemental findings we'd like to read into the record if there is a second to the motion. These elements would be added to the ordinance to explain the factual basis for adding the street width restrictions.
Okay, do we have a second? Commissioner Campbell?
I'll second that.
Okay, so is this something you want to add now, or should we vote?
I'm happy to add it now.
Okay.
And so we'd like to add two additional findings, the first being that Appendix D of the 2016 California Fire Code, adopted by ordinance by the City of Pacifica, establishes minimum street width and construction-type standards to ensure safe access by fire apparatus. Among other standards, Appendix D requires street widths to be paved with asphalt, concrete, or other approved surface capable of supporting the load of fire apparatus weighing at least 75,000 pounds. It further requires streets to be at least 20 feet in width, and prohibits on-street parking on streets 26 feet or less in width. Appendix D allows on-street parking on one side of streets greater than 26 feet but less than 32 feet in width. And the second finding is, in order to preserve public safety, the Planning Commission finds it is necessary to prohibit attached and detached accessory dwelling unit construction on unpaved streets and on streets where Appendix D of the 2016 California Fire Code prohibits on-street parking. Such a prohibition is necessary because ADU construction will generate intensified demand for on-street parking. Increased demand for on-street parking may result because off-street parking facilities may be unavailable to offset the demand, and because no mechanism exists to limit the number of automobiles owned by households occupying ADUs. In particular, ADUs located within one-half mile of transit generally will not have sufficient off-street parking facilities, because the city is prohibited under state law from requiring off-street parking for such ADUs. See Government Code Sections 65, 852.2D and E. Additionally, households occupying ADUs located elsewhere may own more vehicles than can be accommodated in the off-street parking facilities the city is permitted to require for ADUs under state law, which is not more than one space per bedroom or per unit. See Government Code Sections 65, 852.2A, 1DXI. Therefore, the Planning Commission finds and determines it is possible and likely that accessory dwelling unit construction on streets less than 26 feet in width could result in increased on-street parking demand. The Planning Commission further finds and determines that on-street parking on streets of inadequate width has the potential to narrow or obstruct the path of travel of fire apparatus and other emergency vehicles, delaying response time, and endangering public safety.
Thank you, Christian. Okay, so we've got a motion, and we have a second. Please vote. And that motion passes four to one. Thank you again, Christian, and the Planning Department for just a phenomenal job on a very, very tough subject.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to, do I need to do the, anyone agreed language on that?
Yeah.
No, great. Moving on to, we have two consideration items. One is a designation of a liaison to city council meeting for September, a tentative date of September 11th, 2017, for the ADU.
Right. I moved this down because I didn't want to presuppose that it was going to be, the recommendation would be approved by the Planning Commission. So, yeah, the council is tentatively scheduled to hear this, this item on the 11th of September, and so it would be great if we could have a liaison assigned.
Great. Commissioner Behringer, since you cast a lone no vote, no, I'm just kidding.
I'd be the perfect one to represent.
Any, anyone interested in representing? Yeah, one person's, Commissioner Clifford?
I'll take it.
Oh, thank you very much, Commissioner. Yay. Okay. So Commissioner Clifford, thank you very much for agreeing to be the liaison for that city council meeting, and we look forward to hearing your, your report about how it went. Second consideration item is the library advisory committee appointment. It's back again. We need to appoint one member of the Planning Commission to the library advisory committee.
I think this is another one for Commissioner Behringer.
Commissioner Clifford, is that a new light?
That is a new light.
Ooh.
I am going to volunteer again. I know this has been a hard one for the Planning Commission, and I am going to go ahead and take the bullet.
Bless your heart. Bless your heart. Thank you very much. Okay, so that takes care of that. And moving on to Commission Communications, any lights? Commissioner Behringer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have an announcement to make. I have kind of mixed emotions about this, but tonight is going to be my last meeting as a planning commissioner. I've thoroughly enjoyed my time as a member of the Planning Commission, and I have really enjoyed working with the planning commissioners. It's probably one of the finest group of planning commissioners I've worked with on a lot of projects. And the planning staff here is awesome, and I've really enjoyed working with you guys. And I've, I want to know, let you know that I really appreciate you putting up with all my questions and creating a lot of aggravation in your life. You guys are very good sports about that, and I do appreciate it. My wife and I have an opportunity to relocate back east where we plan to ultimately retire. And I'll be leaving Pacifica in the first week in September. It's an amazing community. I'm going to miss it. We'll come back to visit, and maybe I'll even come in and watch a meeting or two, just to see how you guys are doing. But I want to thank all of you for your support. You've made me feel welcome on the commission, and I do appreciate that. And I want to wish you good luck on all the future decisions that you'll be grappling with. And I know that it'll, it'll be a lot of fun for you, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Behringer. I want to say just heartfelt gratitude for your service on the commission. It's been a real pleasure to get to know you as a person, also as well as a commissioner. I always, I just love the, your input, your insights, the experience that you bring to the table. It's been really wonderful. So good luck in all your future endeavors. Really appreciate it. Commissioner Clifford?
I want to second all of that and add that I'm really going to miss you. And I do hope you do come back and visit with us. All right.
Commissioner Cliff, Campbell?
Well, stunned, but I wish you the best, and I really have enjoyed how much, I really appreciated how much preparation you take before you come to every meeting and the insight you've brought. So really going to miss you up here, but glad you're moving to someplace that you want to ultimately reside.
Okay, I also want to, once again, extend a, it's funny, it's kind of like a coming and going. We've got Commissioner Behringer leaving, and we've got the Commissioner Stegnek on board. So welcome. We're really excited to have you on here. Commissioner Clifford?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I think that wraps everything up for Commission Communications. Staff Communications?
I just had a couple of things on the dais this evening. You'll notice that you have a mitigated negative declaration for the residential project on San Pedro Terrace Road. That comment period is opening today, and so we wanted to get that to you guys as soon as possible, so you can start looking at that. Depending on the number of public comments we receive, the earliest that could be before you would be sometime in October. I also wanted to let you know that next Monday, the city council will be having their study session on short-term rentals. So there's a variety of different policy stances they could take on this. So if they do want to regulate them in some manner, it'll likely be coming before you guys for a zoning code amendment in the near, near future. And lastly, we, we have given authority to enter into a contract for the LCP update, C-Lowry study. And so we will be kicking that off very soon, and you'll be hearing more about that in the community.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Clifford, is this an old button?
Actually, it's, I'm ready to make a motion to adjourn.
You put that light on before Tina even started talking.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford?
I move to adjourn.
Commissioner Behringer?
I will second that motion.
Please vote. There you go. That passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and good night.